Our board of commissioners meeting. We will begin as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the protection of the flag. President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You're allowing to take public comment if there's any. Not, we'll move on.
Make a motion to amend the agenda slightly to have a talk about what I'm going to talk.
Oh, Amy, just to, for today, just to talk about my shirt. Do you want to do that at the end of the meeting?
It's up to you wherever you want to do it. I, I just would like, is, is there, I mean, it has to be a motion to follow Robert's rules. That's why I brought that.
We often add things to the agenda. I think we'll forego the Robert's rule. I just allow you to ask her to talk about.
Okay, alright.
We often bring things in and out of the agenda.
I, I was trying to be procedurally correct.
Thank you. Bill, look for the approval of the minutes of the June fifteenth meeting.
Second.
Yes, we moved to second and then the additions, deletions, or corrections. Very none all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so moved. Now we have some good business to take care of before we get into the agenda formally. Would you guys like to come up and look up into the? We have a proclamation to present to Anna Devine who's leaving us in about a month. Oh, yes, that's right. It's July eighth. Oh, my gosh. Yeah, I misunderstood that. You started in August.
Yeah.
Of eighty-six, but yes, July eighth. And would you like to introduce your husband?
Yes, this is my husband, John.
Hi.
Welcome to our meeting and we do have a proclamation gratitude for your service to the county. And we will adopt that formally, but I'd like to make it for the record. Whereas Anna Devine began her career with the County of Lebanon, employed as caseworker one in children and youth on August eighteenth nineteen eighty-six, transferring to area agency on aging as area case manager on September twentieth nineteen ninety-nine. Whereas on February twelfth, two thousand and seven, Anne was promoted to aging care supervisor one. And on May twenty-first, twenty twelve, was promoted to aging care manager supervisor two. Anne was promoted to deputy administrator on January twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. And whereas during her tenure, Anne served the county with devotion and commitment. She performed her duties and responsibilities in a proficient manner. And whereas on July eighth, twenty twenty-three, Anne will retire from the Lebanon County Area Agency on Aging with over thirty-six years of distinguished service. And now therefore be it resolved that we, the Commissioners of Lebanon County, on behalf of passports of county commissioners, past and present employees, and all our citizens unite to thank Anne for her outstanding service provided during her many years of, of the county. Further, we extend our congratulations, the best wishes to you and John for rewarding future and best retirement.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Let's adopt this and we'll stick a motion to do so.
I'll make a motion to adopt the proclamation as presented for.
Okay, it's been moved to second and all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, close same signs, so moved. And Anne, would you like to say a few words or recount anything for us?
Yes, I would. When I walked into the building this morning, James Holtry was there. He was my very first supervisor in nineteen eighty-six. And it's nice to see that, you know, he's still working for the county. He gave me an opportunity that, you know, fresh out of college, I wasn't sure this is really what I wanted to do. And I was able to move through children and youth and move on to aging and help a lot of people. And I hope that, you know, with all the things that I've learned and experienced, that I'll continue to do so. Not as an employee, but as a member of the community. And I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
I don't believe so, no. Just wanted to say thank you. I have dedicated employees for decades. It is just so awesome. The turnover is a real problem for businesses in the community. And you have shown that you can have a career here with the County of Lebanon. So that's a great example. Thank you. Thank you so much.
That's, that's our work directly, you know, helping my parents many years ago. And think about the hundreds and hundreds of lives you impacted possibly over the years and even thousands in, in the leadership role that you have and will continue to impact. So thank you.
I'll just add thanks as well. I mean, I was just thinking that people are looking younger and younger as they retire around here. And maybe you'll follow the same path as James Holtry and maybe you'll show up and it's coming back in some other capacity. So just the door's open.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your service to the county and it's, it's good to leave on a high note as you are. Would you like to, for the picture? There is a type one here and you can't see it.
Steve, I'm Laura. Excuse me, Tom. I don't know who's going to take, oh, Boris. I think who has a camera. There you go. Somebody can take one of yours. Oh, he's Jamie today. That's right.
That's nice. He's got much better hair.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you so much.
Excellent.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Very much so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. See, yes.
This is newly with us as treasurer. Would you like to go push yourself?
We have received some seven four, seven five, two million, eight hundred twenty-two thousand, four hundred forty dollars and eight six cents. Our total cash was four million, eight hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty-three cents. Our expenditures this week were two million, six hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Twenty-two thousand, thirty-four dollars and sixty-two cents. This is a balance of two million, one hundred seventy-four thousand, four hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy-six.
Open the proof that.
Second.
It's been moved to second that we have approved the treasurer's report as presented. Any questions or comments regarding the motion? Very none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, we proceed.
Michelle Staley, Director of the Personnel Transactions, Resignation from the Foundation. Angelica Burisi, Casework Supervisor One, Children and Youth Reservation effective July fifth. Joshua Wendermaker, Caseworker One, Children and Youth Reservation effective June twenty-third. John Secovas, the Third Operations Technician, Department of Emergency Services Reservation effective May twenty-second, last working day, March twenty-first. Joseph Walsh, Fulltime Correctional Officer at the Jail, Reservation last working day, June seventh. Jody Weber, Caseworker Two, MHIPI Retirement, effective September thirtieth. Don Wolf, ID Program Specialist Two, at MHIPI Retirement, effective September seventh. Jessica Poit, Formation Officer One, Promotion Services Reservation effective July third. And Bonnie Carmichael, Office Support One, and Burger Registration Termination, effective June nineteenth.
Make a motion to approve resignations and terminations as presented, calling out Dawn Wolf for her long tenure.
Second. Motion and second. Recognition for Dawn. Any questions regarding the motion? Very none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so moved.
Under changes in status transfers and promotions, Holly Whitmer, transfer from Caseworker One in Children and Youth to Work Release Assistant Counselor at the Lebanon County Correctional Facility at rate of one thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents by weekly effective June tenth. Michelle Hall, transfer from Court Officer in the Courts to Office Support Two, Domestic Relations at rate of one thousand, eighty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents by weekly effective July tenth. Alyssa Banks, promotion from Admin Assistant One in Domestic Relations to Admin Enforcement Lotte Assistant Two at the rate of one thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and three cents by weekly effective July tenth.
Will that prove those changes?
Second.
It's been moved to second that we approve those transactions and questions. None all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so moved.
The sheriff would like to hire Patricia Alpery as a casual part-time security officer in building security at the rate of twelve dollars and fifty-five cents per hour effective July tenth. Children and youth would like to hire Suzanne Lampier as a fiscal technician at the rate of one thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents by weekly effective July seventeenth. Lebanon County Correctional Facility would like to hire Madison Fleming as an assistant counselor at the rate of one thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents by weekly effective July tenth. The planning department would like to hire Stephen Dennehy as a building code admin two at the rate of one thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and six cents by weekly effective July tenth. And the Renova Center would like to hire Cohen Meyer as a casual call development assistant at the rate of fifteen dollars and fifty-nine cents per hour effective July tenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the other transactions as presented.
Second. It's been moved to second and comments or questions? Very none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so ordered.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all the transactions, pre-lease, pre-rent, plus the following. We're going to skip the Mercedes. But Hannah Apple, there's a correction to her title as casual part-time correctional officer and an affection to the rate of twenty-one dollars and sixty-three cents, so effective June twenty-sixth. David Shaker, longevity detective in the detectives unit, a one-time five-year longevity payment of seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety cents, effective July twenty-seventh. And Drew Harris, longevity full-time correctional officer, Lebanon County Correctional Facility, one-time ten-year longevity payment of one thousand, five hundred dollars, effective July twenty-seventh.
Second.
It's been moved to second that we approve those salary board transactions. Any questions? Very none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so moved.
I'm Bob Dowd, Director of the Public Services. And I want to order the agenda. Start with several change orders that I have. And the first is HVAC change order number two. Total amount of this change order is thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. This change order incorporates several changes to the design of the heating cooling systems, both in the radiant slab and in a little bit ceiling space in the center area of the address. Let me keep going through the rest of the change order.
You know, I'll take the individual. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve that change order as submitted.
Second.
Yes, it's been moved to second. Let me, I have another question. Favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so moved.
Okay, the next change order is from the contractor change order before. This is to install water piping to the computer room air conditioning units. Something that's required to maintain humidity. This change orders the amount of seven thousand, one hundred eighty.
Make a motion to approve change order number four for the water piping.
Second, that we approve that change order. Any questions? Very none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The final change order I have is actually for the radio system. This change order is to increase the microwave capacity, which is the linking between all the towers from a hundred and five megabits per second to a hundred and fifty-five megabits per seconds. This is a future proofing piece that will allow us to load additional things onto that microwave network as these, as those needs present themselves. This total change order amount to seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
A motion to approve that change order.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved to second. Any, any questions? So, favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so moved.
The final thing I have is to go back officially to ratify the lifting of the burn ban. Burn ban was initially put in place as a protective measure on June eighth. It was a thirty-day burn ban. Weather conditions changed significantly during that burn, during the actual following weeks. And based on recognition of twenty-two, rather than twenty-four, twenty-two, rather than twenty-four fire chiefs that responded to a pull. We lifted that burn ban on Friday.
Monday.
Sorry, Monday. Sixth, Monday, June thirty-sixth. And we need to go back and officially ratify that as an action.
Make a motion to approve that action.
Second.
It's removed to second that we ratified and actually taken effective last Monday. Any questions regarding the motion? Any comments? Very none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Hosts?
For consistency, I'll be, though we know, I did vote to give an exception to Twingo Park and was prepared to vote to do exceptions for the others. But we have a scheduled Wednesday workshop and I thought we could have voted on it then so that we weren't second guessing the weatherman. The ground was so dry and I observed. And I, I really respect the firemen, but I also have studied the creeks and things for a long time, the flow in some of the tributaries was not going. The ground was still dry. It was just a little bit of surface. If we wouldn't have got those pouring rains on Tuesday, I would, you know, I was concerned about that. That's all. And I did express that. I'm, I'm not criticizing. I just think procedurally, I think a Wednesday vote would have been in order. It, I felt it was an emergency to declare a ban because everything was so dry and people of authority were letting us know that it was time. And I agreed a hundred percent. It was so dry, but coming out of it, we could have taken another day or two just to, you know, do it at a public meeting. So it wasn't out of, that's how I felt. So I, I expressed that. So it's truly just for consistency and I don't know.
I guess I'm troubled that you're willing to second guess the fire chiefs, but you're not willing to second, you don't want to second guess a weatherman. And that's surprising to me that you would weigh so heavily the weatherman over the fire chiefs that are saying it's a safe, they're the frontline people that have to fight the issues if they, if they're wrong. They're twenty, two out of twenty-four supporting. And the other problem I had is, at least I recall, we cannot take a vote on a, at a workshop.
Well, we can because it's an advertised meeting. We have done it in the past. We traditionally don't. We save the business meeting for Thursday as a courtesy to the media. But legally, I think we would have been on solid ground taking a vote on Wednesday.
Okay, that's, that's something. You're right. I think Mr. Dowd did a good job contacting experts in the area and the fire chiefs in the community. And I think we took appropriate action, placed a ban. I think we took timely and appropriate action based on the information we had. Very moved.
And I will publicly thank you also because I, I think you went the extra mile in when you put the notice out that you were, it was being rescinded. That you, here are the steps you still need to take to be cautious about, you know, fire and so on. So I thank you for doing a, a complete, you know, coverage on it. So thank you. All right.
That's it. I'll have it.
Yeah, it was a split vote. Yes, James.
Yeah, can we go back to the change order for a minute? Can you just give an update of how much you think it's been so, like the total amount so far in the various change orders and where that falls in, the amount you'd set aside for that?
We've, it's set aside one point seven million for change orders. I should have brought the amount that we, I, we're still. I'm taking a guess. I think we're somewhere around seven hundred thousand spent to date. But I would have to go back and verify that and I can't. But we're doing very well with change orders. There's hasn't. Things complicated, all that stuff. We'll get this. I think we're very fortunate. Having well-designed, showing. Just now we need to, you know.
Still pretty much on, on target with your, you know.
So there it is. And it's, you know, common knowledge at this point that there's a nationwide shortage of high voltage electrical panels. That problem is impacting us as well. And I'm told that some of their projects in the area specifically up at school right here, it's also impacted by the delay in the ability to get these panels. If you give us shift dates and then there's coming though with the panel change order. Till we actually start to see electrical gear show up, I don't, I don't know. Safely put that.
Set the switch here.
What, what is it? Is it like the fuse box or?
Basically, big fuse boxes. Yeah, yeah. The control systems for the high voltage power.
And so what is the issue? I mean, it's supply chain, yes. But is it that these things are manufactured in Taiwan or China or something or?
I don't know the answer to that. I think Jimmy asked me that same question recently. Said I overseas manufacturing issue, the, the assemblies are, are built in the U.S., tested and delivered to us because they're custom designed for our facility. As far as the components, I, I don't know if it is an overseas capacity issue. I don't know if it's. I don't know. I have to look and see if I can find that. I don't know that I'm going to get a definitive answer on it. Seems that this is just one of the few lingering supply chain issues for COVID that has not recovered like the rest of.
One other question related to yesterday's explosion at Raffo Township. Did that? I know we had a number of volunteer fire companies that lent mutual aid. Did, did EMA get involved in any?
No, it didn't impact, it wasn't the county level. I wish it was one, but that was a.
Anything else from the floor? Not, thank you for your attendance and don't forget the Lebanon area fair is coming up in three weeks. Oh, yes, Monument Park.
Oh, thank you. There were some citizens who had a discussion on social media about Monument Park. And I felt it was worth, at least, oh, we also didn't do the vector. I, we, I thought it was worth bringing it to the floor. I, I know that I've been lobbying for new lights, benches. And periods, only period of Victorian style and also planters. As well as we have to keep repainting the flagpole. It was brought to my attention that that needs done again. And we have to ready with them and go up high and paint it. So I also think replacing that with an aluminum flagpole would be a very appropriate improvement to the park. But the reason I bring it up now is because the discussion centered around two things. One was the education to make sure that everybody is aware and permit to have a formal event, no matter how innocent it is, at Monument Park. And I think that, that the message is received by this individual. But I did find a copy of our ordinance, whether it's behind some plexiglass, it's hard to read through its weather. And so I thought maybe we could do a, a sign to that effect that, you know, there's a ordinance and you must have a signed agreement to conduct business, so to speak. That's number one. But number two is, this, the other thing that was brought up is a lot of the lights don't work. And we're very few and far between. And there is, there are people in there after dark. And it is now closing it, you know, it's dawn to dusk. So it's supposed to close as soon as the sun sets. And that means the time passed, so you can't say a specific time. And it is for the safety of the residents in that area and the businesses. And I, I would like that, I think we have at the very least money in our, our funds that we could allocate if we could get the MBL and our staff and neighbors to work together to get some pricing for us and a plan. I'd love to see that get on. I think there's so much interest and history in that part. And I just place that on the table for your consideration. You know, if it's, if everybody's in agreement, we could move to, you know, move ahead with it to get those quotes and come back for a load another time, but on the pricing. But if, you know, if you want to wait for some reason, that's fine too. But I wanted to make sure it didn't get pushed aside. We had some people in, well, your, maybe it was before the pandemic and they were looking to do improvements and we, you know, we made some.
We did.
But we have a ways to go and I'd like to get it finished up. It is a county park. We were assigned to take care of this park by our forefathers. And it went through the state legislature and everything. So I just feel very strongly about this. And that's why I wanted to have a discussion and ask for that consideration.
I did not oppose that when it gets back to our conversation.
So.
To explore with possibilities and associated cause, but also like to bring up that there are people in our community, especially veterans organizations, that this, this, this park is sort of hobbled around while it's not a race site. It's a mine to establish to honor civil war veterans who died in service from Lebanon County. People that, you know, we should have known that's there. Discussion is to this, that, or expect the very thing to, to show the progress on some people.
And, and the signage, I understand, again, the the things that are proposed would be used whether there's an event or not. It, it does go to public safety, especially after dark with the lighting and things like that.
And they're not supposed to be there.
They're not supposed to be there. Then, then, and, and then I informed this person, but the people have to know in the neighborhood that enforcement is by, when somebody sees somebody, you have to call the police so they can come out and take care of it. They can't be in all places at all times. So it's like the squeaky wheel in a coil. And people need to call the police when they see some activity that is not appropriate after a dark, so.
I agree with Mike. That's the, I, we discussed it further, but I'm pretty sure we have Jamie here and, and, you know, make it.
We'll do a motion at a later date. That's fine. I'm good with that. I just wanted to get the ball rolling and I didn't want it. The people, because it was quite a few commenters, I didn't want them to think we didn't care about the neighborhood and we really care about the park. And I would like to project that with our actions at some point in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me about the veterans exemptions. We do have one more piece of business, the motion to approve the property tax. Um, thank you for reminding me about the veterans exemptions. We do have one more piece of business, the motion to approve the property tax exemptions.
I'll make a motion to approve the disabled, one hundred percent disabled veteran real estate taxing exemptions as uh, reviewed by doctors and people higher up in the state and making a recommendation about us.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve those, uh, property tax regulations. Any questions? None all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so moved. Now, any other business to come before the floor? Motion adjourned.
Second.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.